...school board, or maybe even council. This is the reason of why he gave this great elaborate speech. We're gonna drive into the beautiful city of Baldwin Park and see a three-story condos over there. That's a joke. And we're driving through the weed dispenser, not dispensaries, but the weed places. Why we do that? We're not driving through a beautiful part of town. We're driving through the dump part of town. Because we're gonna have all the weed people over there, and all our old, uh, commercial buildings over there. So I don't see any beauty in that. Then we have, um, Christopher Sinesz. Well, he's connected with the soccer league. The dads get all the kickbacks from the soccer league through Manny Corillo, Ricardo Pacheco, and Manny Lozano. So we see where the three votes came from, that were against, we're for this project that's going to cause nothing but massive congestion. We're gonna have massive congestion down Badillo with the other two projects that are coming in. These people don't foresee this because they're only worried about one thing. They're only put in there to do a yes vote. And they're called puppets. They're not called voting for the residents and for the people. And I'm sick and tired of seeing this type of stuff go on. I wanna see this, and I did put this in the meeting when I talked the last time. I wanted to see straightforward voting. I wanted to see vote for the residents, not for your pocketbook on this. I know you only get 50 bucks a meeting, but there's other benefits. There's other benefits. And this is stupid, what we're doing. We have enough trouble getting people onto these agencies, and the reason we do, because they don't want to be puppets. It's not worth the 50 bucks or 25 bucks for that. But I, I stand, I really appreciate the way that we got in, and two of the people stuck up for what they thought was right. Even though they were the, the minority, but they stuck up for what they were right, and I, and I applaud that.
Mr. Tuttle, your time is now up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is the clock, you have a clock going up? Oh, it's on there? Oh, you just have it on your phone? Okay. Thank you.
John Rios, resident. Uh, one of the things, you guys are being puppets. Not only that, but you guys have to really read the rules and regulations on the weed growing people, okay? Gus had told me 600 feet. It's not 600 feet. It's 1,000 feet from any playground, any school, or anything, okay? So that's something that you guys have to put, uh, your minds to it and read it, okay? The state will gladly give you all that information, okay? Like I told Oscar, you know, the last time Gus, I told him, "You want me to get all the information, I'll get it for you." You know? I have connections over in Sacramento. You know, the things that happened the last meeting, the trees they put down, hundred-year trees, and they're, you know, they just tear them down. They don't care. They don't care. You know? I talked to some people over in Sacramento, and they found out about it. He says they're gonna come back and go after the planning commission. Yeah? Because 100-year-old trees, they're protected under the state law. Okay? So you guys just, trying to be a puppet, go ahead, be a puppet. I used to be a commissioner too, but because I didn't want to be a puppet, they kicked me out. Mr. Pacheco didn't like it. You know? You guys, you know, the two that voted last time, they did the right thing, you know? Not only that, but the community is already aware of it, about the weed-growing thing. They're trying to come up and, and raise and out, uh, bulletin for them to see it. I passed it out yesterday. They go, they were supposed to come in later today, or come back on the next meeting that you guys have, which you guys have to have two meetings, okay? So that's one of the things you guys have to look at. You know, that church group things, they're gonna be doing the march on, uh, next month. A lot of them are aware of it too. Okay? So, you know, one of the things you guys have to do is take care of the citizens, and they'll take care of you. If you're not, fine and dandy, we'll take care of you. Thank you.
Sir, can you please state your last name before leaving the podium?
I did.
Can you restate your last name, please?
You weren't hearing it, or?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't-
It's okay. Rios. R-I-O-S.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, commissioners, or council, whatever. My name's Arturo Arluna. You guys have, uh, I like the idea for some of the stuff you got, but where's all the dollars and cents that's gonna cost us? Because that's what normally happens. We end up paying. None of your records on my paper show anything. It shows we're not gonna make any money. If your paper says we're gonna make a million, 2 million, 5 million, or whatever, how come my paper doesn't say it? So technically, and I can talk to both of the lawyers, you guys doing this stuff illegal. Because I'm supposed to have the same thing you're looking at, I'm supposed to have. I only have roughly, maybe, three pages? And I'm pretty sure yours is more than three pages. How come mine isn't three pages, or longer? If yours says dollars and cents, how come mine doesn't say that? You know, we're the city people that pay all this money you guys spend. How much money is this, uh, gonna cost us? I know. Don't tell them. They don't need to know. Are you getting a grant for this? Or is it that tell me you're gonna get a grant? Or maybe 20 years ago you might've had it, but not now? You need to tell us what's, everything you do. Doesn't say very much on these three pages. I don't know. Maybe you're reading the same paper I'm reading. But if it is, it's not very good. Doesn't show how much we're spending, or how much we have to spend, or how much income we're gonna make out of this. Where's all the money? Where are you getting all the money? I tell the city council the same thing. Where are you gonna get all these tons of money? You know, if you walk outside and look at a tree, there ain't no money on there. I can tell you that for sure. But you guys keep spending a lot of money. Where is all the information that you people have, I should have? I know. We'll, we'll send whatever we can to Sacramento, and they'll read it, and they'll say it's okay. Well, technically, what you have, I need. And I'm pretty sure if you're reading the same thing, this, it's not very thorough, telling us what's going on. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
If this is on the development agreements cannabis, the public hearing will be held in a short time.
And you'll be able to speak then?
No, this is, this is only public communications on general matters, not on the, on the public hearing matter.
It's for anything not on the agenda right now. Did any of the commissioners wish to respond? Um, public communications will now be, oh, sorry about that. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm Nick Metropolis. I'm the landlord of the PNG Superburgia in Ramona and Puente.
Is this on the cannabis issue?
I'm the landlord.
Okay. Um, the public hearing for that will be held shortly.
I don't understand.
There'll be an opportunity for you to come up and talk, but, but not right now.
I cannot talk right now? Okay.
Todavía no empieza.
I will now close public communication. And next we have on the agenda...
Consent calendar.
Consent calendar.
A motion to approve action minutes from March 28th.
Second that?
I abstain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
With one abstention.
With one abstention. All right. Next we have, um, the minutes?
No, we just did that.
Oh, we just did that. Okay, sorry. Um, request for consideration, which is...
The next, uh, the, the first public hearing will be presented by Robert Tofoya, the city attorney.
Yes. Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. I wanted to clarify one issue that was brought up previously in public communications regarding the footage and how far you have to be away from sensitive uses. I'm reading from the medical marijuana program, Article 2.5. "No medical cannabis cooperative collective dispensary operative establishment or provider who possesses, cultivates, or distributes medicinal cannabis pursuant to the article shall be located within a 600-foot radius of a school or sensitive use." So I believe that the 600-foot radius, 600-foot, um, marker is correct, but I wanted to clarify that for the commission. And I, you are correct, I'm standing in for Amy Harbin and Gus Romo. Unfortunately, Amy is on vacation. She would normally give this type of report. And Gus is, fell very ill, and so he was not able to be here. So I was asked to stand in, in their behalf, and I'm willing to do so. So on behalf of the planning commission, and Amy Harbin, and the staff report prepared on April 11, 2018, I'd like to give you some summary information about essentially how we got here, and where we're intending to go with these types of agreements. First of all, the city adopted, there are two types of development agreements. You're going to have before you what's called a statutory development agreement. The other type of development agreement is called a non-statutory development agreement. And the real difference between a statutory development agreement, which you're going to be reviewing today, and a non-statutory agreement, which you're not reviewing today, is language pursuant to government code. So there's certain language that a statutory development agreement has to have. It has to reference the government code. It has to reference certain issues in that government code. And if it doesn't, it's not a statutory development agreement. So what the city did previously as a result of the cannabis ordinance and the industry which we're trying to grow here in Baldwin Park, is what's called a non-statutory development agreement. So we did not put in government code sections, we did not put in statutory language that would make it a statutory development agreement. And we did that on purpose. Because at that time, um, their decision was made that we didn't have enough time to do certain things in, in a statutory way. We're not required to do a statutory development agreement. We can do a non-statutory development agreement. We did that. We negotiated with all 15 of the parties. We negotiated what's called a non-statutory municipal development agreement. Everybody signed. The council heard all of these development agreements, and approved them all. As a result of all of that, there was a lawsuit filed against the city of Baldwin Park. And in the lawsuit, it claimed that all of the stat, all of the development agreements were improper because they didn't go to the planning commission, and they did not have a first and second reading. Well, that's a statutory development agreement. That's the reason why the municipal non-statutory agreement never came before you. Because it was not a statutory development agreement. That development agreement is still in place today, and is valid and enforceable. What the city has decided to do is to put before you a statutory development agreement for all 15 applicants. So we changed the development agreement, make it a statutory development agreement. We included government code language and all the other things that are required for a statutory development agreement. That's now before you for a recommendation to the city council. The recommendation by staff is that the planning commission open the public hearing, and follow the public hearing, and adopt resolution PC 1808, entitled Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park, recommended that the city council approve each of the development agreements for the cultivation, manufacturing, or distribution of adult and/or medical cannabis locations, 4145 Puente Avenue, 1455 Joan Bridge Street, 14824 Ramona Boulevard, 4150 Puente Avenue, 13111 Spring Street, and 428 Cloverleaf Drive, 5117 Combeau Avenue, 13467 Dalewood Street, 14837, and 14841 Ramona Boulevard, 5148 Bleecker Street, 15023 Ramona Boulevard, 4621 Littlejohn Street, 5157 Azusa Canyon Road, 5175 Commerce Drive, 13450 Brooks Drive, units A and C, 4502 Littlejohn Street, and 13460 Brooks Drive, applicant city of Baldwin Park, case numbers DA 18-01 through DA 18-15. So that's the staff recommendation. What I can also tell you regarding these development agreements is they have all been vetted through the planning department. And all of the distances, the 600-foot, the 50-foot, all of the state and municipal distances that are required to buffer these types of businesses, have all been vetted through the planning department, and they all meet or exceed those buffer zones. So none of them are in any illegal spot. They're all in legally zoned areas. The city council has adopted industrial commercial zones as allowing cannabis and cannabis-related businesses. All of these businesses are in either industrial or commercial, and they all have the proper setbacks pursuant to municipal code and state law. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do have one question. So I, I, I actually take this, this topic very seriously, so I comb through everything. And I do have one question that I, that I did find. So in the staff report for, um, for application 1803, so the employee requirements, it says at least 30% of the projects worked for shall consist of residents of the city. But then when you flip through the ordinance, it lists only 20%. So is that, can that be updated so that the ordinance reflects 30%?
The ordinance reflects sort of the minimum that we try and get to. But anybody in these development agreements, they're negotiated individually. So my office would sit down with the lawyer or the representative from the other side, and we would negotiate. And sometime the businesses wanted to go above and beyond what we actually require. So rather than 20%, they say 30%. And so the ordinance is such that it can be 20% or greater, and so some of the people chose to do that.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question. Arbo, council?
Yes, sir.
You stated that all the addresses are within the legal limit. And I have a particular question in regards to one that's, uh, 14824 Ramona Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
At the corner of that intersection, 23 homes are gonna be put in. The ones that were voted on the last planning commission's meeting. And that one definitely falls within the 50 feet. There's 41 feet between that property and that property where it's being built. I don't know who in the Public Works calculated the distance, but I would like that actually reviewed again, to make sure that I'm on the right track.
Okay. Can you tell me the name of the applicant there, or the application number, CAN 17-something?
Or, or the DA number?
1803.
And is that, uh, just a minute, Mr. Commissioner, Vice Chair, excuse me, Vice Chair? Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. did make the determination that that was outside of the buffer zone. That's all I know right now, since Amy and Gus are not, are not here. But we can certainly double-check that and, and confirm that. But it's my understanding that all of these are outside of the buffer zone, and the planning commission has already vetted all of these. And it was actually, the fact of the matter is, many of the terms, for example, the pay, how much they're gonna pay the city, the terms of the, the length of the agreement, how many Baldwin Park employees and so forth are gonna be hired, all of these have already, all of these terms have already been approved by the city council, but we're changing it to make it a statutory agreement, and want your review as well. But I can say that all of them, I can tell you for sure that they're all within the zone. And if they were not, they would not be at this point.
Okay. My next question to you, council. The 600 feet pertains to schools, parks?
Correct.
Teen centers?
Yes.
And I believe restaurants?
I don't believe it's a restaurant. I believe it's youth centers and other kind of public-related, uh, school, type of schools or youth centers or instructional activities. I don't believe it's restaurants. 600 is not a sensitive, I mean, restaurants are not a sensitive use.
Okay. When we first voted on this, I, I'm pretty sure I remember reading into that, and it did have restaurants listed on that particular item. I'll have to back, go back and check that.
Fair enough.
Which brings me my next concern, that there's two restaurants on one particular vicinity where, um, three others will be in violation of those 600 feet. And that's 14837 Ramona Boulevard?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
14837 Ramona Boulevard, 14841 Ramona Boulevard, and 4145 Puente Avenue.
145, 145 what?
Okay, so 14837 is the first one?
Yep.
14841 is the second one? And 4145 Puente Avenue is the third one?
4145 Puente Avenue is the third one. Okay? Again, we will take a look at that again, but I can tell you that the planning commission has vetted every one of these, including these addresses. And they've all, they've come to the conclusion that they all are legal and conforming pursuant to state and municipal code.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I have just a question here. Sanders Candy Factory, um, they're, I believe they're contending that they're a kosher facility. Have you done any investigation to how that would affect, if it affects them at all, or how much it'll affect their business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have not done any investigation per se, but the issue that's raised by Sanders Candy Factory, Inc., in their April 9, 2018 letter, number, number three, it says our candy is kosher. And it talks about how the emissions from these facilities could potentially affect their business. And what's written into our code, and what's in the development agreements, they have what's called an air quality plan. And they have to have a plan where there's zero emissions coming from their business. So they have to have a ventilation system that controls the emissions in-house, and then has some kind of scrubber or some kind of something in order that there are zero emissions coming out of that facility, in terms of any cannabis-related products, smell, or anything of that nature. So it would be my understanding, based on the regulations that are currently in place, that the emissions would not affect not only the candy factory, but anything else in that, in that location.
All right. Thank you. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, I have another question. So, I was kind of researching as much as I could about the topic in general, and so these facilities use an extreme amount of energy to power the lighting that, the light that's supplied to the plant. And so I guess my question is, it's a, so these, these articles I was reading agreed that there's a higher, I guess, fire risk due to the equipment and constant use of electricity, almost 24/7. So are, other than the fire suppression systems that the code, I mean, requires, are we requiring any additional fire suppression system for the increased electronic equipment?
No, we're not requiring any additional sprinkling other than what's required under fire code, or what's required under our municipal code. I, I have done some research, maybe not as much as you, but mostly mine has been in Southern California and the different California areas. I have not read anything that identifies that specifically as a, as a concern. Although I understand what you're saying, which is, if electricity is going 24 hours a day, you do run a higher risk of fire. And we believe that that would be covered by our municipal code and the current fire code.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Any-
I have another question. Council, um, on the agenda, it's listed that there are 15 developments, 14 of which have the cultivation and manufacturing agreement, and one has an exclusive, can you inform us as to what the exclusiveness is of from the other 14?
Yes, I can. The exclusive language contained in the development agreement for Rookly, Inc., essentially says that they will be the only one that is licensed to distribute cannabis products in the city of Baldwin Park. And so that's what it means by exclusive, is that they'll be the only one that has a license to distribute in the city of Baldwin Park.
Okay. So the other 14 have to report to Rookly? Is that the way I'm following this?
They don't have to report to Rookly, but distributors under state law have a very specific defined task. It's not just picking up marijuana or cannabis and delivering it to a end location. They also, according to state law, this is not something Baldwin Park requires, but it's something that the state requires. The distributors have to collect taxes. Distributors have to document, um, the product that they're taking. And they have, you know, it's called a, what they use in the state is a tag and sale program, where every particular plant is identified by number. So the distributors have to identify each plant and the number that they have. So they have a lot of different tasks that they have to complete. And any cannabis cultivator or manufacturer would have to have those same communications with any distributor, whether it was Rookly or anybody else. They still have to pay the taxes to the distributor, they still have to identify the product to the distributor, they still have to do all those things. So yes, in the city of Baldwin Park, because Rookly is our distributor, then the cultivators and the manufacturers would have to follow state law with Rookly as it relates to their distribution of their cannabis products.
Okay.
And the state law requires them to go through the distributor.
Is Rookly also a cannabis manufacturer and cultivator?
They're not.
They're not? So they're strictly logistics, or?
They are strictly what you call a distributor, and that's a term of art with state, with the state of California. A distributor has a certain defined task that I just, some of them I just identified for you. And so in order to be a distributor, you have to have a license from the local entity and from the state of California, just like a cultivator and just like a manufacturer. So a cultivator and a manufacturer has to go through the same process that Rookly does. They have to get a license in a local entity like Baldwin Park, and then once they receive that license or permit, then they have to apply in the state to get a cultivation or manufacturing permit to operate according to state law. So Rookly has to do that same thing. They have to go to the state and get a license to be a distributor under state law. And once they are licensed as a distributor under a state law, then the state requires that the cultivators and the manufacturers in Baldwin Park cooperate and communicate certain things to the distributor. cooperate and communicate certain things to the distributor. And so our, our people would be required to do that as well.
Okay. So now, the 14 that are just cultivators and manufacturers, are those to report to Baldwin Park? Because if you're saying that they have to report to distributor, then that means they could go outside of Baldwin Park?
No. The development agreements that you have before you, it's a contract. It's essentially a contract. And that contract says that the manufacturers and the cultivators can only use a distributor that's licensed by the city of Baldwin Park. So they could not go outside and get a distributor licensed in the city of Linwood and then distribute their product in Baldwin Park. They could not do that.
Okay. I apologize for these questions, it's just, we got the agreements yesterday, and so it was a lot to take in in the short notice of time. To be honest with you, I didn't get a chance to read the actual agreement, because it's 24 pages long. Well, I apologize for all the questions.
I am happy to go over any of the areas that you may have or any questions you may have in the agreements. I'm very familiar with them.
Okay.
And I apologize that they were to you yesterday.
Yeah. There was also an ordinance that was sent along with the agreement. So it's just a couple items that I didn't get a chance to actually read through, because it was all sent at one particular time. And there wasn't enough time for us to actually review that. I don't know if the other commissioners feel the same as I do, but...
Fair enough. And like I said, any questions that you may have in any of those agreements? I'm very familiar with all of them. I can answer any questions that you have.
Okay.
I have a question. I'm more of a layman with all the big words being used. The one with exclusive rights, does that mean they have the right to open up a store in Baldwin Park and sell it to the public? Or does that mean that they can, they're the main ones that just grow it and sell it somewhere else?
That's a good question. The exclusive is for the distributor. So they cannot grow, they cannot sell, they cannot manufacture cannabis products based on the license that we gave them. All they can do is distribute. They're the, they're the delivery service, if you will.
Yeah.
And so that license allows them to pick up cannabis in Baldwin Park and deliver it wherever the person tells them to deliver it to. But it does not allow them to sell anything, as you say, to open any retail stores. There are no retail stores that will, that are allowed in Baldwin Park. That's still against the law. So Baldwin Park is not selling cannabis anywhere in its city limits. All we're doing with this ordinance is allowing people to manufacture and to cultivate cannabis. So the answer to your question is no. They would not be allowed to open up new things or do anything other than pick up cannabis and take it outside of our city.
All right. It's because the, the City Council made it known that they weren't going to have any stores selling it in Baldwin Park when they passed this. So I just want to make that clear, because I couldn't, I couldn't distinguish with the words that you were using earlier.
No, I understand. That's a very good question, and it's really important for people to understand. So if anybody has any questions about that, I'd be very happy to answer those, because it is a very critical issue and something that the council was very concerned about. And one thing that they made very clear to the residents and to me and to everybody else on the staff, that no cannabis was going to be sold in the city of Baldwin Park. And that's still true today.
Okay. So I have another question. So I'm a big promoter of business, and I think that we need to support business. So when I was reading the newspaper and I was reading articles of certain applicants that were saying that an exclusive contract with distributor was potentially going to affect their business, it's actually good to hear kind of some insight, because now I'm realizing that regardless of whether we had an exclusive distributor or not, they'd be subjected to the same amount of cost regardless. So, but I do have, the exclusive contract, where I'm a little uneasy and unsure, is, is there a contingency plan? If Rookly were to default, go out of business? Considering that, that if they have the exclusive contract, how fast would we be able to turn around and get another distributor in place to support these businesses?
That's a very good question. Thank you for asking that. In the event that Rookly were to default or be unable to distribute cannabis products in Baldwin Park, we did discuss that, and we would, we would, in the event that happened, we don't believe that it would, and we believe that Rookly is a company that's very well-funded and has the capital to operate, has been doing, been in business for a long time. And not necessarily the Rookly Company. The Rookly Company is relatively new. But the people that operate the Rookly Company have been in business for a long time, transporting people and other important commodities. And so we think that they're going to be fine, they'll stay in business. But in the event that would happen, we would immediately call a emergency meeting, and we would have to change the development agreements that you have before you with all of our 14 applicants. And it would be my recommendation, if that happened, if Rookly went out of business and dissolved and no longer existed, then if that were to happen, then we would probably issue a new distribution license. But of course, we can't do that unless something drastic, like what you're talking about, because we're contractually obligated to Rookly at this point in time. And there's no way to break that contract unless, you know, they cease to exist.
And I'm sorry for...
Or if they breach the contract, you know? If they do something and they're not, they are not servicing our, our businesses, then of course, we would bring action against them and tell them that they're breaching the contract, and they'd give an opportunity to cure it. And if they didn't cure that, then we would take appropriate action. But we don't anticipate that happening, as I mentioned.
So are they, is Rookly working with UFCW to enter into a collective bargaining agreement? Or is that just, like, are the employees of Rookly going to be union employees?
That's a good point. Rookly is the only company that signed what's called a labor peace agreement. And so Rookly is agreeing to various concessions as it relates to their employees. They're agreeing to a living wage, they're agreeing to health benefits, they're agreeing to all the things that a labor peace agreement requires. So they are very, very, very labor-friendly, and we feel like that the jobs that are going to be coming out of there are going to be very nice. We would love it if all the other 14, other than Rookly, would sign a labor peace agreement. That would be even better. But Rookly has done that, and we're very happy about that. And I think it's also important to remember that in terms of the pricing, a lot of people did have comments about, well, we don't know what the pricing is going to be, and, you know, we might not be happy with it, we might not be able to work with these people, and all these different kinds of things. After all the permits were issued, and as things have gone forward, I know that these companies have contacted Rookly. They're negotiating and meeting regarding what the prices are going to be, how the surface is going to be provided. And I've heard zero complaints from any of the 14 applicants that they've not been able to work with Rookly. So it's my understanding that they're working with them, and they're coming up with agreeable prices, and that they're going to be able to get up and running. Because I have not heard any complaints about that.
And so I know that that's a promise, that they're, they're going to, you know, work with, with the local to come to an agreement. But if, if in fact, in the near future, they decide that they are not going to enter into a collective bargaining agreement or labor agreement, since it's not in the ordinance, it wouldn't be a breach of contract?
Well, the ordinance is the law, and the development agreement is the contract. So in the development agreement, it has that in there. So if they were to renege on that, then yes, I think it would be a breach of their agreement for them to tell us they have a labor peace agreement, and it turns out they don't have one. But I believe that, I believe they do have one.
Perfect, thank you.
And this does have to do with this issue. I didn't answer the gentleman's question. I have the same paper that you have, there's no numbers in here. But to answer your question about how much it costs, I believe, I was at a City Council meeting a month or two ago, and they were speaking on the manufacture of marijuana, and they were saying they were going to pay per square foot, I believe, to the city, correct?
Yes, the development agreement has a fee that they pay to the city per square foot.
I hope that answers the question with the...
And I suppose for the record, we do have this agenda, the same agenda that everybody does have, but online, the Planning Division did make everything electronically available. Everything that we have read, everything that was submitted to us is available on the city's website, and it's available for download.
Attorney Tefoya, I had a question for you. I always look at matters such as the, such as these, you know, how it's going to help the residents of Baldwin Park. You know, I'm glad that our priority is being made to hire Baldwin Park residents. You know, we can get that percentage as high as possible. How about, how can we allocate some money for investment in recreational, for the, for the youth, soccer fields, after-school, you know, redoing the basketball courts, youth sports? You know, that kind of thing, where the kids are, are kind of, you know, a big, a big, you know, part of this?
Well, Mr. Commissioner, you're thinking right along the same lines as the City Council. And in the last meeting, I believe it was Councilmember Vice Mayor Pacheco that had asked the staff to come up with a list of some of the things that we're going to do with the cannabis money, which will include recreational projects, park projects, street projects, things of that nature. Because the council thinks it's very important for the community to see the projects that are actually being built or improved based on this cannabis money. Because I, I think, you know, at the end of the day, all things being equal, if we're not bringing in a large amount of revenue, I'm not sure that everybody would want these kinds of businesses in the city. But you weigh that, that cost onto the benefit of what the city may be receiving, and then, you know, the discussion is a little bit different. And so what we're looking at right now is in excess of $3 million each year that would come from the cannabis providers. And that would just be in the fees. That's just the mitigation fees. That's also, that doesn't count the $50,000 for the police department. That's $750,000 extra. That's not counting the $15,000 they pay for administration fee. That's another $250,000 extra. So those two things right there are another $1 million. So it's a large amount of money for the city. And I believe that the City Council is prioritizing the projects that you mentioned there. And I would recommend very strongly that you contact Councilmember Rubio, Councilmember Baca, Vice Mayor Pacheco, Mayor Lozano, and Councilmember Garcia, and express those concerns, because I think they're right with you, and I think you could work together with them on that.
Thank you, Counsel.
You're welcome.
Any more questions from the... No?
One, I have one more question. So distributor Rookly is not connected with any of the 14 others?
They are unrelated in any business way. They're connected in the sense that they're the distributor for the 14. But my understanding is, they don't have any connection to them in a business way, and that Rookly is not a manufacturer of cannabis products, nor is it a cultivator of cannabis products in the city of Baldwin Park.
The only reason I ask is because I see it as a conflict of interest if Rookly is one of the ones funding one of the other applicants.
Yeah, I would, I haven't looked at the legal issue of conflict, but I don't understand that that's happening. So that's why I've never been asked to look into that, but I would be surprised.
That's fine.
Yeah, I believe they're totally unconnected, other than, you know, Rookly's the distributor to the, to the permatees. And so they have to communicate and work things out.
Okay.
All right. Any more questions, Commissioners? All right. I believe we will open it up to...
Mr. Chair, actually, I just wanted to go ahead and point out for the record that we did receive two total letters, not only from Sanders Candy Factory, Mr. Steven Peralas, CFO of Sanders Candy Factory, but as well as from Mark Serreau, with no title behind his name. But there are two letters that we received in opposition.
Copies of these letters have been distributed to Planning Commissioners, and they are made a part of this record. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Tellez. And in furtherance, as a point of information, both letters are in opposition.
Okay, we will now open it to public hearing. Please state your name, you have three minutes.
Somebody left their phone up here?
Don't start yet. Greg Tittle, business owner. I wish I had only wore boots for the BS that's been given by your city attorney. First of all, Rookly started their business in July of 2017. They've never distributed. Yes, they do have a cab company called American Cab that they're going to use drivers to go around and to do this distribute. But they have no business-long history, okay? They have business in the other fields of convalescent and cap, nothing to do with marijuana. Now then, as far as the license for these groups, I have both applications here from the state of California. They both say, whether you're a distributor or you're a grower, it's 600 feet radius. Now, Mr. Tefoya stated that the Planning Commission went around and checked all this BS. I did a Google Maps search plus a visual, which I will be bringing to the next council meeting. Ninety percent of these people are in conflict, one way or another. Now then, the council passed in December of 2017, hurried up urgency ordinance because of Rookly and because of the 4150 on Powhnee was too close. One's right next to a house, the 4150 on Powhnee. They passed an urgency ordinance of 50 feet for housing. Now, why is it not important to, we have kids, we have families in the houses. Why is it only 50 feet for houses? But for, for all the schools and all the daycare centers and everything that has schools and the parks and rec, it's 600 feet. They started out at 300 feet. That's what the police went out, code enforcement, wasn't planning, it was code enforcement went out. They had no clue what they were looking for. What they went out for was code infractions of the buildings that were there. Nothing about designating the footage. And if they did that and did what was properly done, none of these things would have been qualified. You've got Rookly, you've got another one that Pacheco and Lozano were connected to over on Powhnee, that are right across the canal from housing. This is unacceptable. One's right next to the restaurant, one one right next to a house. This has not been checked. He's lied through everything he said. The only reason you guys have got this thing in the commission, which, remember I told you before? Nope, the council doesn't care about your opinion. Just like when they brought in the last thing of the last-minute deal. It's because they got a lawsuit against them. And they had to bring this in here. It had nothing to do with getting your opinion. This weed group is a bunch of derelicts that are coming into our city. They're going to contaminate our city. The mayor, quote, years ago, said, "We're not bringing drugs in our city. We're not bringing anything to do with cannabis." What do they do when it comes to money?
Your time is now up, sir.
Okay. They all got paid off. That's who's making the money.
Ken Woods, resident. Let's forget about all the permits and all the other stuff and get down to reality. I moved here 52 years ago. The first thing I had to learn is how to duck bullets. Duck bullets. Then we got a police department that was backed by our city council. They straightened everything out. Now with this new element, I'm going to have to teach my grandkids how to duck bullets. Don't you guys get it? This is not for our city. You can't put a dollar sign on everything. Dollar signs aren't everything. Sometimes you have to use your, your own internal goodness. Dollar signs aren't everything, lawyer. Dollar signs aren't everything. John Rios, resident. One of the things that we learned over the past couple of months, the City Council, the ones that are running for Senate, is to forget. You know, Garcia got, what, $60,000 from them, from the weed growers? Rubio received $50,000? It's all lining your pocket. That's all it is.
It's all lining your pocket. That's all it is. Why do you think they're just pushing everything forward? Distributor? Come on, give me a break. If you're a grower or anything, you're gonna have somebody else come and pick up your stuff? Do you trust them? No. You know? You get your own product and you distribute where it's gonna go. You report it, let the city go in there, check it out, check your scales and everything. How much power are they gonna use? Do we have the transformers where all these warehouses are? No. The water system itself, where is all that bad water's gonna go to? Back into the river, pollute everything? That's something you guys have to realize. All the warehouses right here, we're talking about filtration, the air filtration. They're called AMA filters, okay? Each filter unit costs around $250,000. That's the kind of work I used to do, okay? I used to work for Avid Levatories. Filtration of air is very important. Look what's happening over in Colorado. They're having a lot of people with asthma, bad, bad water taste and everything. Read up a little bit on it before you guys make a decision, you know? It's our generation that's gonna be coming up, our children, okay? You know, it's something you guys have to think, think before you vote, okay? What the city council wants, lining their pockets. That's all it is. The lawyers, they're getting their share about it. They're doing the contracts. They don't care. The mayor tell them, "Well, put this on, on, on the contract." And right away, they'll put it on. They don't care if we get through again. But that's something you guys have to conscious, use your heart and your brains. Thank you. I'm back again. My biggest complaint, and I'm pretty sure you people probably heard it from somebody else. How much money are we spending and how much money are we gonna make? It says right here, and I'm gonna address this to the lawyers because they're the ones that are writing this garbage up. Says manufacturing. Unless I don't remember how to, what manufacturing means. It means you make something, right? Am I wrong? Maybe I'm wrong. And then it says, "Or distributing." It doesn't tell you where they're gonna distribute it to. It just says distributing. That means that I can manufacture it over here and walk over here and sell it over here. I'm distributing it. I took it from there to here, plain English. So technically, he says they won't sell any in Baldwin Park? He's wrong. I guarantee you, somebody in that organization would dream up some way to go around the law, like Trump would say. "I didn't say that. I'm gonna bend the law and I'm gonna go from here over here and I'm gonna sell it." Why? Because you could put and/or, or slash. Everybody interprets everything in the dictionary, whatever fits them best. So that's what the city of Baldwin Park's doing. You got all these 15 joints you wanna build. Nobody, including the lawyer, has said this is the security that they need to keep, make sure somebody don't break in and steal it, break or crawl through a chain-linked fence, nothing. The city council is the same way. They haven't said nothing. All we do, we want that. Lawyer, get out there and pass it, get it through, emergency meetings and so on and so on. They didn't do, they didn't do due process of law. You know what they did? Did Trump. "Just go ahead and do it. Nobody will tell us nothing." That's exactly what they did. How much money is our schools gonna get for all this? You know, with these 15 distributing places and manufacturing, we shouldn't pay no taxes for the next 100 years because they're gonna make 50 billion and we're gonna be in debt 60 billion. So it's useless for me to tell you this because he's gonna go back to the city council and says, "Oh, man, they're gonna pass it left, right." Only people that were there are the three arguments. Because the rest of the people, where are the people that wanna plant this stuff, eventually sell it in Baldwin Park? Where are they at? Are they here? Nope. They're probably in their office saying, "Ah, don't worry, city council Baldwin Park passed it. The planning commission will pass it." Are all these facilities away from schools? Nope. They're close to schools.
Sir, your time is now up.
Oh, there it goes, three minutes. Gee, many...
Before you leave the podium, would you state your name, please, for the record?
My name is Arturo R. Luna.
Thank you.
In case you don't, Luna means moon.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Beatriz Camargo de Sandoval. I'm the business owner, parent, and volunteer in many issues in my community. I was honored by Woman of the Year in 2014 by Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. And last year, I was honored with an award, the Women of the Year for my job and the community, a award for my community, like Woman of the Year for the assemblies, Blanca Rubio, and also Ed Hernandez, Senator Hernandez. When I entered to this meeting, I noticed that you, Mario Maciel, asked for, for sorry, for us. That's your job, us. You need to make more question about this issue. It's very important for your family, for your sons, for your daughters. And maybe you're thinking about it, you complain, complain about the time when you receive the documents to read. How many you, how many you have the rights, children in this community? How many times you have to read all that documents? I come to my house at 7:00 PM. Do you have time to read that, all these documents? I think you need to put one motion to receive those documents before, minimum four weeks before that, this meeting. And in this issue about exclusivity. I run the business for more than 20 years. Also, when I was in my country, Mexico. I never had the exclusivity run my business. I run the business in Mexico, the aerobics and gym. I run the business, a small business here, like the Smotolcheck. I, I have many, many Smotolchecks around me. I don't have any exclusivity. Why this company get one exclusivity? That makes monopoly and that makes corruption. They give the favor, how much they receive back for this exclusivity. It's your job, Commissioners, to read, understand before vote for this, I would say, BS. That vocabulary is not in my, in my knowledge until now. Until read everything like this. 14 permits, more, more other things, permits to make cultivation marijuana. You know, you know how many lives in my country lost? You know, in the impact, the impacted health and the community and social issues? You ask for recreational programs? Ask the families who have one place, one house where to live.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Can I state your name, please? We didn't get that at the beginning, please.
Beatriz Camargo de Sandoval.
Mr. Chair.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chair, maybe we could have Mr. Tellez communicate in Spanish to the gentleman who came up earlier that this is the time now if he wants to speak.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jesús Ortiz. One of the distribution is basically being built behind my house and I don't think it's okay because down the block, there's another school. It's called Pleasant View. A lot of little kids go there. And to me, this distribution center, it's a, pretty much a burden because it comes with a lot of chaos. Because marijuana, it, people say it's good, but it's not. Because a lot of people do it and they do a lot of bad stuff. Even though you could have the highest security, they're still gonna break in and they're gonna cause chaos. Another thing, property value is gonna go down and that's gonna be a big hit for everything here. A lot of people are not gonna be safe anymore because they think since marijuana, there's a lot of trouble behind it. You guys gotta focus on that. People's safety is bigger than all this stuff and all that money. Money really doesn't solve anything. You guys gotta protect the people. Don't care about your pockets. People are what matters most. That's it. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Christine Tsang. My dad owns a business here in Baldwin Park. Actually, we're the adjoining neighbor for 4621 Little John Street. So thank you for holding this hearing so that we can voice our opinion. Should I restate my name? My name is Christine Tsang. My father owns a business here. We're an adjacent neighbor with an adjoining wall to 4621 Little John Street. We would like to oppose the permit for 4621 Little John Street, if not for all properties being issued a permit. Mainly because we also, we sell clothing and I understand there is zero emissions, but there's, we're concerned about mold. We're concerned about odor sticking to our products that later get shipped nationwide where marijuana is not necessarily legal. And we're also concerned about the safety of our employees as well who go in and out of the building. Our area is in a commercial area, so it's generally business owners. However, at night, there's, well-known that our area has a lot of people who come late at night. We often find needles, find drug paraphernalia. We find bottles of alcohol lying around and we've had our merchandise frequently stolen in that area, which the police has not been able to solve or find a culprit. So in general, we already see a significant amount of crime within our area and our concern is that, one, that our business may be affected and that that area will be further corrupted. We would like to request, if possible, after the first, perhaps the first distribution, if, if this goes through after the first distribution of merchandise, that from that point, we still have a year or get any evaluation a year from now to see if there's any emissions, any further crime increase rate, if there's also any damage to our property since we are the owners of that building and we fire is a very real thing for us. Thank you so much for listening.
Do you mind if I get your name?
I'm sorry? Christine Tsang. Thank you.
Your business is where again?
4611 Little John Street. It's the adjoining neighbor of 4621 Little John Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Nick Metropolis. I'm the landlord of 15038 Ramona Boulevard Corner, the restaurant, the PNG Restaurant. And you're gonna put next to my parking lot, Puente Avenue, next to my parking lot, less than 100 feet. And across the street, don't even 100 feet. And I don't think it's a good idea. It's gonna be crime, they're gonna lose a lot of family people, the restaurant. High school kids come eat over there. Not gonna be a good idea to put marijuana factories. And I don't support that. Thank you very much.
Sir? You're, you're at the corner of Puente and Ramona?
Less than 100 feet, Puente and Ramona.
This is the restaurant I was actually talking about, Council, for the note.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I have identified the address, 15038, and we will look into it.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? All right. Seeing none, I now close public communication.
Can I ask two follow-up questions? Or do we have somebody else?
Oh. Reopened.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Aibin Sanchez. I live in Baldwin Park for 50 years. Because I don't like it, the marijuana in my country, Baldwin Park. Because I take it for Nike's. Eso es un veneno para la, para los niños. Han puesto la zona residencial. Era zona, ahora es zona industrial. Nos mandaron papeles. De qué sirvió que firmamos si ustedes no hicieron caso? Para qué nos mandan los papeles y los interesados son ustedes? No piensan en la juventud. No piensan en los niños. Ustedes que son mexicanos, ¿por qué admiten eso? ¿Por qué están envenenando la, la juventud? Eso no está bueno. Hay más, hay más trabajos decentes que puede hacer la gente. No vender esa hierba horrorosa que mata a las criaturas y a los, hasta las personas grandes. Yo no estoy de acuerdo en eso. Atrás de donde yo vivo pusieron el gas butano. Yo nunca quise, puse un papel. ¿Acaso me hicieron caso? No. ¿Por qué? Porque ustedes no se ponen a pensar en que hay un Dios que los va a juzgar. Y todos esos niños que matan a la marihuana están a cargo de los que son los representantes de la ciudad. Por si que tenemos el presidente que nos está mandando ya para México, pero si nosotros nos vamos, pobres de los que se queden. Porque los que se quedan, americanos o mexicanos o de la ciudad que sea, no van a trabajar como nosotros mexicanos. Yo trabajé 37 años en, en la escuela y gracias a mi padre Dios que dé ayuda, que dé sola con cuatro hijos y estoy saliendo adelante y no por ningún motivo de la vida quiero que pongan esa, esa hierba. Que la pongan allá en el cerro. Hay muchos lugares que pueden poner allá eso, pero no aquí en nuestra ciudad. No basta que se hicieron un puño de casas ahí que ya no puede uno ni parquearse en, en las tardes. Anoche hubo un accidente frente de mi casa. Matan al muchacho y los policías no más buenos, que, que no pasó nada y que nada. Entonces, ¿a dónde nos vamos a recurrir nosotros? ¿A dónde vamos a ir? ¿A quién, quién nos van a parar? Quiero que alguien de ustedes nos explique. A las 3 de la mañana yo me recordé, sí, mire, temblando porque casi me pasaban a traer en mi casa. Mi casa está en la calle 51, 29 y el carro venía de la mujer... Mi casa estaba la queijo, el 51, 29, y el carro venía de la mujer borracha, así, y casi matan al muchacho que estaba ahí en el carro. La debe estado testear, o sabrá Dios qué estaba haciendo. Eso es lo que debe deber la policía y la ciudad, a que la gente que toma, que no maneje. Lo que ya vienen ustedes aquí a querer ponerlos esa hierba horrorosa. No, 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 no. Yo de ninguna manera estoy de acuerdo.
Ya se le acabó el tiempo, señora. Gracias.
Okay. Gracias por atenderme, y dispensen que yo digo lo que siento, y pienso en Dios y en la juventud, que es la primera, porque nosotros vamos de paso.
All right, once again, anyone wishing to speak?
I should have put a translator. You know that, you know, you should have given her five minutes and put a translator.
Can we hear what she said?
Abraham, do you want to give a sense of what she said?
The lady is in opposition of the projects. She believes that cannabis is a poisonous herb that will poison the children, you know, and that's mainly, most of it. She also mentioned crime rates, crime happening in her neighborhood. She's very concerned about that, and that's the most that I can recall.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. She mentioned too that the area was so...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Who's saying excuse me?
I am, sir. Please.
Well, you better get up so I can see you. I'm just trying to help the young man.
Thank you for your input.
I'm just trying to help the young man.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak?
May I speak already?
Oh.
You spoke already, sir?
Yeah, I was just going to tell you guys the address that's right behind the one that they're making. It's basically 5117 Conview Avenue. That, so my house, it's 5120 Gayhurst Avenue. That building that they're trying to do, that distribution, is just right behind my house, right there. And the school is only like a couple blocks down. It's right there on Pleasant View. That's all.
What was that address again? Where you live? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? One.
Paperwork, it says, an interpreter. You guys, make sure we get an interpreter. Some lady spoke a lot in Spanish, and I don't know if all of you understood what she said, but interpreting is okay, but you should have been here to help her.
Thank you. All right. Public communication is now closed.
I do have two questions and follow-up to the public communication. The first one has Mr. Rios, thank you for bringing up water filtration, because aside from all the research that I did, I did speak with an expert in filtration, and so I was asking about the emissions, and I didn't think of water, I was only thinking of airborne admissions. And so she was explaining to me that HEPA filters will pick up any particles, but won't pick up any fumes or vapors. So typically, business will also put in charcoal filters to pick up organic chemicals and fumes and vapors. And so that's good. That's probably going to aid these applicants in cleansing the air, along with probably some ionizers that they're going to place inside of their own buildings to prevent mold. But I never thought of water filtration, and actually, in nothing that I read, was there anything about water filtration? I know that we've talked about airborne filtration, but is there, like, does our local water company require any water filtration system before any of these applicants depositing their water into our local basin?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, I don't know of any local water company that does require any additional filtrations, but what I can tell you is my, in my visits to these locations, I didn't see one of them using soil. They don't use soil anymore. They use some kind of foam or something like that, you know, so there's not fertilizers that go, there's not a lot, it's not like you would think of as a grow, like where there's a little pot and a little soil in there, and you put fertilizer. That's not how they grow cannabis. And so I, but the answer to your question is no, I don't know about that.
And then a second question into Ms. Tsang. So, should any of her merchandise be affected? Any, if any of her merchandise should be affected, it's clearly an indication that there is emissions leaving their neighboring facility, which, would that in turn be a breach of contract since they are not containing their emissions?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, not only would it be a breach of contract, but the business owner would have a claim against the cannabis operator. And if for any reason the city were to be brought into that based on a lawsuit against an individual applicant, then the city would be indemnified as well. So, we're pretty much protected on that sort of thing.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions from the commission? All right.
I would like to make a motion, if we can, to move this to the next meeting. I want to look into those distances between those properties that were in question, and also the importance of knowing if that restaurant clause is also included in that.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, there will be a five-minute recess?
Do we need to make a motion for the recess?
No. Motion died without a second.
Well, it got postponed, but is the chair allowed to second?
Estoy en la junta, ¿qué pasó? Sí, en 10 minutos, 15 minutos, por ahí, ¿qué pasó? Los niños.
The problem, the problem that I believe...
I haven't had a chance to... City Council to consider this.
Or to consider this.
No time to...
Bring us back.
Did they catch on it today?
Remember, there's a forum.
Have a session, I'll talk.
But we can, we can... But on the record.
All right. Sorry for the break. We are back.
Mr. Chair, the situation we're in was there was a motion to continue this to the next meeting. However, I should let the planning commission know that there's a special meeting tomorrow of the city council wherein they were planning to take this up upon your input. So, that's the situation we're in.
Okay.
So, can we have a conversation on the record, have a conversation?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, being that there are meetings tomorrow, that the questions should be answered. Your questions regarding the distance, you know, the restaurants and the houses and all that, especially...
And those questions will be answered by tomorrow because the city council would have to do a first reading of the development agreement. So, they could not go forward unless they knew the answers to your questions.
But the honorable counsel that we had answering our questions clearly stated that it was already looked at and that they were already in accordance to the agreements, but clearly, I know for a fact, they're not. So, us approving this means we're going forward regardless of me saying, or regardless of him asking about the water filtration system, and we're going forward with it.
It's actually just a recommendation to the city council. This body doesn't have jurisdiction over this in terms of approving it for first reading. That, your role is legislative in nature, and the only thing that you're required to do is make a recommendation to city council. And you can attach to that recommendation all of these questions that you've asked. And Abraham, you've taken good notes, right, of all the questions?
Yeah.
Okay. And those questions can be forwarded with your recommendation. It's the way we did it before.
The only reason why I state that is because, like, in the opposition that I had towards the 23 homes that were going to be built there, I specifically said, you know, that cannabis was going to be built. The gentleman that came up to speak said it himself. It's right behind me. So, how are you guys allowing them but not allowing me? And even then, it was moved forward. The houses are being built right now. I mean, they're moving really fast.
Yeah.
It's something I totally wasn't expecting to happen. So now, we're in this position again, where honestly, I didn't get to read the agreement because I wanted to see what was the difference between the one we originally approved to the one they have now. I don't know if they're very identical, or they're similar, whether they're to the dot on all of them, or is it just...
Sure, I can answer that question for you. They're similar in terms of the amount of money that they're going to pay. They are similar in the amount of money they're going to pay to the police department, the amount of money they're going to pay in a mitigation fee, the amount of money that they're going to pay for administration fee. All of those are the same for all applicants. $15,000 administration fee, $50,000 of the police department, and $10 a square foot for their permit. All of those terms are exactly, well, virtually the same in all of them. Much of the other language regarding uses, regarding how far it has to be away from sensitive uses, all of that is still the same. What we did was, we provided statutory language and identified this specific government code section that makes it a statutory development agreement. So, the terms that you were probably concerned about, which are the terms that the city is concerned about, the price, the location, the money, the air quality plan, the business plan, all the things that we're requiring them to do, that's all very, very similar, if not identical. But we had to include sites, legal sites, to government code sections to make it a statutory development agreement. So if you looked at, if you have, the other development agreements that were there, that have been there for several months, if you've seen those, you've seen these. They're not exactly the same. There are significant and legal changes, but there are legal changes related to the government code section to make it a statutory development agreement. The material terms that you're looking at, that you've talked about tonight, are all the same.
Okay. So, for example, and related to the police department auditing each individual...
All the same.
All the same. Nothing's changed there.
Nothing's changed. And Mr. Levis is correct. If you wish to send up a recommendation either for or against, but with questions or issues that you have, since this is only a recommendation, you're not approving these development agreements, you can't do that. All you can do is recommend an approval or recommend a denial. The city council will have a first reading, and they will be the ones to decide whether these agreements are approved or not.
Well, that's one of the main reasons why I made a motion to move this forward to the next one, because I want an actual person to go out there and measure that one property that's right next to the new 23 homes that are being built.
Okay, but that measurement can go on well before these are adopted by the city council. In other words, this has to go through a first reading, a second reading, and then if it's passed after the second reading, it's not effective for 30 days. So that measurement can occur at any point in time before these things are actually approved to answer your questions and to be able to provide that to the city council as well. I think it's important for them to know, too.
Okay. Yeah, it's already a done deal.
So, whether we approve or not, we just attach those concerns?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner. You would attach those concerns, and they would be forwarded to the city council.
Thanks.
Okay. So with that in mind, are you withdrawing your motion, or is your motion still on the...
My motion is still to move it forward. I need more time. I honestly need more time.
Is there a second? Okay. With no second, we move to the motion to accept the request. Is there a motion?
And that would include the comments made today to be forwarded to the city council.
Yes. Is there a motion?
So, whether we are for or against, we still have to make a motion so that we can vote on it, right?
That's correct.
So, a motion doesn't necessarily imply agreement.
It does imply agreement. Unfavorable recommendation.
I do. I, motion, motion to vote without a favorable recommendation, right? Is that, we have to send it to the city council regardless whether we're for it or against it, it's simply a recommendation. I voted no on the recommendation, but it still has to go to the city council.
So the vote no was for no recommendation, to send it on through?
That's, that's what.
I'm not clear on what the motion was.
Okay, the motion is to move this forward to the city council even though we did not vote for it.
Without a favorable recommendation.
Without a favorable recommendation, to let them make the decision which they're gonna make anyway.
Okay.
Is there a motion to move it forward to city council?
With no recommendation?
With no recommendation, right? With no recommendation or unfavorable. Is there a motion?
Motion.
All right. I think we're all in agreement to move it forward with an unfavorable recommendation. I think it's unanimous. Okay.
I just want to make sure I have the record correct. Your motion is Chris Sines first, and Edwin Borkas second. The motion is to pass it forward with an unfavorable recommendation.
Yeah.
That's correct.
All right.
And can we attach our concerns?
Yes, absolutely. That's important.
Yeah, I cannot in clear conscience make a decision without looking through all the information, and there was a lot. But, all right.
So we have a motion and a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it's to move it forward with the?
Right.
So you guys are saying, okay.
And so the, just to make it clear, the issues that you want moved forward are, number one, to make absolutely sure, even though I have spoken to a planner, and they said they did take each property, and so, but we're going to double-check that per Vice Chair Maciel's request. And Abraham, you have all of the addresses that he has raised.
I'm gonna have to meet with the commissioners to get the details.
Okay.
After the meeting.
Another issue was water filtration, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, and what's the nature of that?
The impact of?
Water going into.
The water going into our already contaminated water.
Storm drain, okay, yeah. Any other issues of concern?
Mr. Assistant City Attorney, I just, for a point of information, I want to make sure we're very clear about the motion. The motion is to recommend denial of all 15 development agreements, correct? That motion was made by who?
To forward the DA's to the city council with an unfavorable recommendation.
But I want to make sure that the commission understands what that means. You're either giving a recommendation to approve these development agreements, or you're giving a recommendation to deny these development agreements. So I want to make it clear that your motion is to deny these development agreements, correct?
I can no, I can't approve or deny it until I go through all the information, and we're not being given sufficient time to do that. They're, they're having a meeting tomorrow, and as Mario wanted to, Commissioner Mario wanted to put it off until the next meeting, we don't have that time.
I understand the basis, but I need to make sure the record is clear about the motion. So tell me what your motion is.
I abstain.
Okay, who made the motion?
It's my motion.
Okay, Mr. Sines, is your motion to recommend denial of all 15 development agreements, correct?
Yes, it was by understanding that we were doing a blanket vote and not voting by individual development agreements, so yes.
Okay, and who seconded that motion?
Edwin.
Who?
Commissioner Borkas.
No, you know what, I, I didn't, I don't want to go on the record as being second. I wanted to forward it with unfavorable, so as far as deny, I didn't, I'm not seconding it on deny. I understand, but that's what unfavorable means, denied.
Yes.
So if that's not what you meant to do, then that's why I'm trying to clarify this record, that the motion was to deny all 15 development agreements. Are you seconding that motion? No, because my vote was yes. We just all have concerns. I understand, okay. We all have concerns, so no. So, let's, if I may, Mr. Chair, can you please go back over the motion, get a second, and then let's do a roll call?
Yeah.
Since there's confusion.
Okay, we need a second.
So, what is the motion now?
Motion is?
To deny.
To deny.
To recommend denial.
Recommend denial to the city council.
Would it be, can I make my motion again to move it to the next meeting? Because it seems like we're all in disagreement.
Well, yes, you can, but Mr. Sines would then need to cede the floor to you because he's got a motion right now. So that motion either has to be decided on, and then you can make another motion, or Mr. Sines can withdraw his motion and allow you to make another motion.
Okay, so his motion is to deny the approval of this?
Deny, to recommend denial. You don't get to approve or deny, you only recommend. So you're recommending denial of the 15 development agreements pursuant to Mr. Sines' motion.
And if there's not a second, the motion dies.
Okay, so that means all the applicants are literally?
It's a blanket denial recommendation. I don't know that we were given the opportunity to break it down individually.
Okay, Commissioner Edwin is not seconding it, so that basically stops the motion.
So that motion dies.
Okay, that motion dies, for lack of a second.
Now, you can recommend your motion.
I would like to make the motion to move this forward to the next meeting.
I would like to second that motion.
There you go.
Anyone an objection?
All those four tabling it till the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous to move it till our next meeting, so we have time to review and ask questions.
Abraham, when is the next meeting?
A week, no?
I think favorably would be, it would have to be the second Tuesday of possibly May, if we go to May.
Well, we can do the end of?
April.
April.
The end of April.
And we still have a meeting in April.
If we continue to that date?
Yes.
Okay, that's the 25th.
Right.
Okay. If it's not date-specific, we have to re-advertise.
Right.
No, no, we need to make it date-specific, please.
That's correct.
And does it have to be a Wednesday? I mean, can we all agree on a date that's maybe sooner and not necessarily on a Wednesday?
Yes, you can.
And for that, would Amy have to set up a special meeting for us?
Well, the planning staff would set up the special meeting for you.
Okay.
Amy's on vacation.
She got lucky.
I mean, do you want to do this next Wednesday?
Is city council meeting next Wednesday?
Yes, city council.
Yes, it is.
The 18th?
So can we do it?
Their meeting's on the 18th.
Concurrently with city council, like their special session, if we did it at 5:30?
Well, they're upstairs at 5:30, and?
If we were in chambers at 5:30, would that be a problem?
Robert, what do you think about that?
Well, I mean, what do you mean, a problem? What kind of problem?
If we would meet along with city council at 5:30 to make the decision tomorrow, that way we all have time to get the answers and go over everything.
Oh, I don't know about tomorrow.
Oh, not tomorrow?
No, tomorrow's, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Oh, next Wednesday, okay.
We could have the meeting in here at 5:30, and city council would not meet until 7:00 in the chambers. Is that a date?
The date and time of your meeting is your pleasure.
Right. Can you make it that day?
I'm okay with, Tuesday is fine.
Oh, no, that's not, we're talking about Wednesday.
So I'm okay with Wednesday at 5:30.
I'm okay with Wednesday.
Everybody ready?
They agree? Five o'clock on Wednesday?
5:30.
Oh, 5:30.
Mr. Chairman, then you probably need amendment to that motion since the date was not included in the motion.
Okay, so there's an amendment being made. Can we have a motion to meet on Wednesday at 5:30, which is the?
18th.
18th of April.
And so you're making a motion to amend Mr. Maciel, Vice Chairman Maciel's motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion, to amend?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Second, roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
Chair Kevin Rowan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mario Maciel?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwin Borkas?
Yes.
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 Motion passes.
Motion passes?
Five oh.
Five to zero. So, see you all on Wednesday at 5:30. Do I gotta make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.